Counselors, can I please get a motion to come out of recess?
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Counselor President.
Counselor Reyes.
Can I take three items out of order from the ordinance committee?
You may.
Thank you. The first item is Document 321-17. It's a Transesverendo license, 71 May Street. It came out with favorable recommendation. All the paper was in order and I make that as a formal motion.
Second. Motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion? None. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
The next document is 321-17. It's also Transesverendo license, 518 Howard Street, Maverick Sacaria. It also came out with a favorable recommendation. All the paper was in order and I make that as a formal motion.
Second. Motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 The ayes have it. Next document, Madam Chair.
The next document is 322-17. Iglesia Ministerio Vision Cristiana requests to be allowed to do the community survey to clip our city of Florence clean and has been put on agenda by Cesar Matul, Senior Pastor. It came out with favorable recommendation and I make that as a formal motion.
Second. Motion has been made and properly second. Is there any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Okay.
Counselors, any other documents that you wish to take off the table? Seeing there's none, we're going to go back to the top of the agenda. We have resolutions. Document 335-17. It's a resolution in support of Neo Terrero Beo Latinos Unidos placed on the agenda by Counselor Reyes. Can I please get a motion to table?
So moved.
Motion has been made and properly second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Document 336-17. Resolution in support of Edwin Terrero Beo Latinos Unidos placed on the agenda by Counselor Reyes. Is there a motion to table?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Next document is Document 4... Let's to give time to Counselor Reyes, going down to withdrawals. Document 281-17. Handicap parking, 100 Bailey Street, Maria Cruz. Is there a motion to withdraw? Is there a motion to withdraw?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Going back to the top of the agenda. Document 411-16.
Thank you, Counselor.
Chair.
It's an alternate parking of Young Avenue. It came out with a favorable recommendation to order a public hearing and I make that as a formal motion.
Motion has been made.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing there's none. Discussion, Counselor Rodriguez.
I just wanted to look at this paper. Oh, these items come out with a... With no recommendation.
So there's some... The motion currently on the floor is to order a public hearing. Madam Chair, would you like to make an order, a motion to accept as a committee report?
Make a motion to accept as a committee report.
Motion has been made and it was seconded by Counselor Maldonado to use this. Okay? Any discussion for the committee report?
For what, which document? I'm 65.
No, 411-16.
Thank you.
411-16. All those in favor to accept as a committee report, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Madam Chair or any other counsel, is there any further action on this item?
Come.
Is that order?
Is there a motion to order a public hearing?
Counselor President. What district is this then?
This Young Avenue. It was placed on the agenda by Counselor Ortiz. Is that your district? Counselor Ortiz's district.
Okay.
What would you like to do with the item?
Waiting on the committee.
The committee accept, made a motion to approve it as a committee report. They had no recommendation.
And I'm just waiting for the chair.
Okay. Thank you. The reason this, we sent out with no recommendation is because we got the report from the police department. Not recommended alternate parking. So we kindly send it up just to give opportunity. Just if you want to take in a different action, we're going to table until we, you know, decided what we're going to do. But since he's not recommended to do alternate parking, that was my, our only reason.
And through you, Counselor President.
Counselor Rodriguez.
The reason, or another reason why it was a negative, it was because the street is only 16 foot wide, so it was not recommended.
The width is not sufficient.
It's not, it's very not.
I read the same notes from, yes, through you, Counsel President. So I read the same notes from the DPW Director and from the police department and I believe, I've spoken many times at this council, that we need to respect our department heads and their specialties and that they are here doing the job day in and day out and that as a council, we lean on them and their expertise in helping, guiding us in making a decision. And so I respect that decision that's been made by the, by the two departments.
Thank you, Counselor Ortiz. Sometimes it's really hard for us whenever we see name of any counselor because I know that this, that didn't come from you. It's for the resident who has asked you to take some action, but sometimes it's getting out of our hands. However, we just don't want to leave or delete it or send out for withdrawal without giving you opportunity. You or anyone who has put something on the agenda.
Is there a motion to withdraw?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Thank you, Counselor Reyes, for the work. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Document 65-17. Madam Chair.
It's a Unifor Street request to add to the winter parking ordinance and that also came out with a favorable recommendation to order a public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Document 122-17.
It's a Lourdes Sun corner of Wynton Street in Broadway. Has been put on agenda by Counselor President. It came out with favorable recommendation to order a public hearing and I make that as a formal motion.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
I know it has been a long nine and we just kind of, like, we don't need to answer anymore. But yes. The next document is 176-17. It's a review modification of residents sticker parking on Fairmont Street as a publish and it has been put on agenda by Mayor Rivera, Counselor President Vasquez and Counselor Rodriguez. It came out with a favorable recommendation to order a public hearing.
Second.
Discussion?
Counselor Ortiz.
So can, I need a little clarification. What do you mean review and modification of residents sticker parking?
The city council previously approved Document 176-17 and the placement of the signs were on the right side.
On the upper side.
On the upper section. And it should have been placed in the lower portion of Fairmont Street.
Okay, got you.
So the idea...
So it's just the placement and that's why we have to modify it? Okay, perfect.
Okay. Any further discussion, Counselors? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Document 218-17. Madam Chair.
It's a handicap parking at 82 Jackson Street. Had been put on the agenda by myself. It came out with a favorable recommendation to order a public hearing and I make that as a formal motion.
Motion has been made and properly second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Document 268-17. Madam Chair.
It's an Office of Planning of Development request for proposed amendments to Lourdes Suning ordinance for me, solar energy. It came out with a favorable recommendation to order a public hearing and I make that as a formal motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion? Seeing there's none. Discussion. Counselors, please note that this is part of the project we've seen in terms of the city of Florence becoming a green community by the state of Massachusetts. So, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Document 268-17. Madam Chair.
That's the one that we just read?
Yep, thank you. 279-17. Madam Chair.
It's a handicap parking at 131 Woodland Street. It came out with a favorable recommendation to order a public hearing and I make that as a formal motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Next document, 280-17. Madam Chair.
Also handicap parking at 222 Stern Avenue. It come out with a favorable recommendation to order a public hearing and I make that as a formal motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Document 297-17. Madam Chair.
Handicap parking at 25 Warren Street. It have been put on agenda by Counselor Rodriguez. It come out with a favorable recommendation to order a public hearing and I make that as a formal motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next document, Document 313-17. Madam Chair.
International Energy Conversation Stretch Code Adoption Request. It came out with a favorable recommendation to order a public hearing and I make that as a formal motion.
Motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next document is 317-17. Madam Chair.
It is a stop sign access in Warren Street in safety mitigation. It has been put on the agenda by Counselor Rodriguez. It come out with a favorable recommendation to make, and I make that as a formal motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We have no housing committee reports, no public safety, no committee of the whole reports, whole business. We have Document 197-17. Permit to Solicit Money on Public Ways. Placed on the agenda by Council Vice President LaPlante. He was chatter objected and we currently have a motion to approve. Is there any further discussion?
I'd like to make sure that the motion reflects the amendment. The amendment has two things. One, that is inside there, that there be expressly stated that the permit is for free. And the second portion of the amendment would be that there's going to be a step, a step increase for fines. First violation is $50, second violation is $100, third violation is $150 and the fourth is $250 and everyone after that is $250. That include that as part of that motion.
I second the motion.
That's not in writing. That was done, that's done, Mr. Clerk, that's not in writing. What I just said was not in writing.
That's part of an amendment.
Yeah, an amendment. Okay. Could you repeat that so I get it right?
Sure, I'll do it slower.
Please.
Within the, within the, within the language of the document, the permit will be, will be no cost. It'll be free. And then there will be a step increase for the fines. There will be four step increases. The first fine, first violation is $50, second violation is $100, third violation is $150 and the fourth and every succeeding violation is $250.
Got it.
And the amendment was made by Counselor LaPlante and there was actually a second by Counselor Maldonado.
That's right. And just to be clear, the motion that we're working off of, the one that has the permit coming from the city council, that's the one that was print, that was printed in the publication. Just wanted to make sure.
I don't think it was printed in the publication myself. Confirmed?
This one right here.
I'm talking about the step increase.
Nope, that wasn't.
No, that wasn't.
I want to make sure this is the one that's, that language has been printed up.
If you would confirm or work with you on it.
Yes.
You would make, yeah, okay. This is the one that's...
That's the one. Got it.
Counselors, any further questions or comments? Okay, seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Present.
Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Yes.
Counsel DePena.
Present.
Noted. Counsel Rodriguez.
Present.
Noted. Counsel Abdu.
Yes.
Counsel Ortiz.
Yes.
Counsel Maldonado.
Yes.
Counsel Alvarez Rodriguez, absent. Counsel Vice President LaPlante.
Yes.
And Counsel President.
Yes.
Two, three, four, five, six. Two present.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Whole business, Document 285-17. It's residents ticket parking at Park Street between Jackson and Berkeley Street to be deleted. It was chatter objected in our last meeting. The current motion that stands before us is a motion to reject the request. Counselors, any further questions or comments?
I'd like to make a motion to withdraw the document 285-17.
We currently have a motion on the table, so we will have to...
I'm sorry?
The motion that we have on the table supersedes the motion to withdraw.
Motion to withdraw.
So what we will have to do is, the legislative process will call that we will have to take action on this motion. If the motion were to fail, a motion to withdraw or any other motions could be then presented. But the, the motion on the floor supersedes a motion to withdraw. So I cannot accept a motion to withdraw.
What is the current motion?
The current motion is a motion to reject.
To reject?
Yes.
To reject the document?
To reject the document.
Okay. Which is the same thing?
Which is, which is the...
It's very similar, yes.
Yeah, but Counsel...
Before Counselor Reyes, Counsel Maldonado, you have any further questions or comments?
No, it's just that I would like to state that it is my understanding that the parties involved in this matter have come to an understanding and agreement and that we should not stick our nose into it and let them deal with it the way they have.
Counsel, thank you, Counsel Maldonado. Counsel Reyes.
Yes, that is correct, but my only question that I have and probably our city clerk can't give any feedback on, how that came possible, happened, what is going to be a new document since they become an agree, but it's not an ordinance? So they know, they don't live on Park Street, they live on Jackson Street and we want to make sure that they're going to be safe because they can commit and say, yes, we allow them to have two spaces, but how is that going to happen?
The best way I can answer that, if I may, Counsel President, is I'll suggest this to the counselors. Number one, this is an ordinance and as a public body, subject to the approval of the city attorney, other individuals privately cannot affect what the public body has decided until it becomes an ordinance. So the rejection of the deletion of the ordinance which is before you is a public function. Public function in fact would be going back into play would be the, the ordinance for resident parking.
It's going to stay.
It's going to stay.
So, and that's what we, that's what I'm, that is my question.
And, and it reverts back to, and I'm trying to answer your question as directly as possible. It reverts back to the ordinance. The ordinance will be in effect.
So no changes will be made, in other words?
Yeah.
So even though, do you have any further questions, Counsel?
No, well, actually, you know, I just say the same because they're not going to be able to park there. They're not going to be able, as much as they committed to give and willing to give two spaces, how that's going to possible happen? Legally, it's not going to be a way. They don't leave on Park Street, they leave on Jackson Street. And that is the issue that we have.
And I think Counsel Reyes, if there's no further questions, I'd like to provide some point of information. Can I please get a motion to...
Motion's going past 10 o'clock.
Thank you, Counsel Abdu. It's been properly second in the discussion. Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. So the, I had a conversation with the city clerk last, during our last meeting in reference to this. We have to understand that even though the private parties came to an agreement legislatively, no action has been taken by our body. And as a result of that, even though they agreed verbally on something, it will not reflect what they are looking to accomplish. So if we were to either, you know, reject it based on the current motion and/or if that doesn't pass, completely withdraw the document, as a body, we took absolutely no action here in, in this item. So even though the parties agree to find a solution of their own, we have decided we are not taking action for any matter if we were to reject it. My recommendation, it, it doesn't have to happen this way, but I think that the fairest, the more fair way to actually accomplish something in the next couple of months would be that we actually approve the deletion of the sticker parking today and suspend our own rules in our next city council meeting to be able to add a document that allows for residents sticker parking for Jackson Street residents as well. Are Counselors following this idea?
Yes.
Currently, the way that the ordinance is written, Jackson Street residents are not allowed to park in that portion of the, the street. We remove it today, we re-add it and suspend our rules because we aren't unable to add a similar document within a one-year period. So we will have to suspend our own rules to re-add that document for the next city council agenda in two weeks. We will then move it over to the ordinance committee, order the public hearing and allow them and make it a permanent solution if we were to do that. Rejecting it tonight doesn't solve the problem. There's no, we, we didn't come to a resolution, even though the residents agree on something.
May I? Counselor, what I don't want to see happening is just to, not to take any action and be facing the same issue that we've been facing for the last two years. This is, has come in being back and forth, like they come, they agree, no, I'm not accepting, yes, they're going to be able to. So this is, this has been a nightmare, not only for them, but also for us because they've been coming in front of us, present the same issue, nothing new, nothing has been changed. So I think this is the time just to take some action. If it doesn't work, then like Counsel President has said and recommended, I mean, know that we have to go his way, but I think, you know, we have to do something. So the motion is to...
So the, the current motion right now is to reject the petition. That's the current motion on the floor. Counsel Rodriguez?
Which is basically the same thing of withdraw the document, basically, right?
Yes, withdrawn, so in turn, it's withdrawing the document.
So voting yes on this is withdrawing the document, basically?
Yeah. Well, you have to understand, withdrawing the documents, removing it completely from the agenda, rejecting the document allows us to actually continue the conversation if another motion is presented. So a withdrawal is, you know, the document doesn't exist anymore. Rejecting it still gives us the opportunity to have another motion if that one were to Am I correct, Mr. Clerk?
That's correct.
But all this, I'm sorry, through you, all this says, as far as what we have here, it says resident sticker parking, Park Street between Jackson and Berkeley Street. We already know that there's resident sticker parking on Park Street between Jackson and Berkeley Street. This isn't asking, this item in itself is not asking for anything.
Yes, it's asking to remove it.
It's asking to be removed.
It's asking to remove resident sticker parking.
Yes.
So...
From Jackson, we're going to be able to park.
So it says, right, that's, it doesn't say remove anywhere here.
It says to be deleted.
To be deleted.
Deleted and removed.
On this side, so to be deleted, meaning to delete the ordinance?
Yes.
That presently exists, that Park Street residents will no longer be able to park there with their permit. It would be null and void.
Everybody want to be able to park.
Right?
Yes.
That's what that is.
Yes.
And so if we say yes, so the motion at the moment is to...
Say no to it.
Is to reject the item.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not to.
So again, I know it sounds very confusing and I, and I'm going to explain it one more time and try to follow the concept here. The motion as presented will not accomplish any changes, anything at all. Why it will not accomplish anything? Because the residents made an agreement themselves, but that is a private agreement of their own. They could agree to allow not one or two or three, all parking spaces for residents outside of Park Street. They could give us, one, a parking space there. The legality of it is that that's non-existent. Why? Because in our book of ordinance, when you were to read it, it's not written. So the residents agree, but that was an agreement of their own with no legal basis before the legislative body that is the one that decides what happens in public roads. To my understanding, that section of the street remains a public road in the city of Are you following the thought here? Okay. So given the fact that it is a public road, private agreements cannot be made. If we keep, it's not enforceable at all. It will not be, the police department will not be able to, one, issue a sticker parking for residents on Jackson Street, which is what Park Street residents are saying, remove this and let the police department issue the parking stickers. The police department will not be able to issue parking stickers because it is not written as part of the ordinance. My suggestion is we move the process and we delete the resident parking sticker to then suspend our rules in the next city council meeting to be able to allow the new document to be added that will once again say resident sticker parking for residents, including residents on Jackson Street. If we don't do that, we will never be able to accomplish what we're seeking because the agreement was made privately for a public road. It's not enforceable at any capacity.
Why couldn't we just modify it, review and modify like what we're doing on Fairmont Street?
The publication will have to be posted all over again because what we published as part of the public hearing is specifically for removal of the sticker park, resident sticker parking.
Well, at no point am I in agreement with the not being permissible with the present permits. I don't want the present permits to be impacted by anything.
What other suggestions are, I, I said, I'm going to offer a suggestion. I don't think that's the only solution, but I think that's the most comprehensible solution at this point.
But it still suspends the fact that anyone that lives on Park Street will no longer have access to where they have it.
And it also will not allow residents from Jackson Street to have parking where both parties have agreed to.
Right.
It's not offering a solution for neither party.
Correct, but we're still not, we're not changing. Is, is it possible to review and modify the resident sticker parking on Park Street mimicking what we're doing on Fairmont Street?
Mr. Clerk?
Yes, but not right now, not this vehicle. The motion before the council right now is to reject the deletion. You either vote yes or no to reject the deletion and either proceed with another motion to either allow the deletion, whatever your like is, but the vehicles is insufficient. What is being suggested is that an additional document... What is being suggested is that an additional document concerning Jackson Street residents may be necessary, and that, that sounds possible, that's, that seems more possible, more plausible, and it would probably incorporate something close to what the residents have probably agreed to. I have not even seen anything that they agreed to, it's all been verbal, but that would have to be published and, and noticed as a public hearing through this public body.
So if there's no further questions or comments, I will call the question.
I have another...
Counselor Maldonado?
At the last meeting, when I suggested that we amend the current resident sticker parking, I was told that it couldn't be done. Okay? Now, we are saying that it could be done.
Not through this vehicle.
Huh?
Not in this vehicle, not in the format that it's presented.
Exactly, so it have...
It can't be amended.
So another, another, simply another document will have to be generated.
Either another document or through this document.
And that's why this document needs to be rejected. It needs to be removed and put some, some, something different in its place, simple.
That's your prerogative.
Yes, yes.
We, I am ready to call the question, but I just want to point out, removing the document will not allow Jackson Street residents to park on Park Street. Removing the document will not allow Jackson Street residents to park on Park Street. No changes will be made, and even though we feel good about taking a yes or no vote today here, the reality of it is that we took no action, even though we feel we did. We took no action if this document were to be rejected. Me personally, I am not going to tell anyone how to vote, but me personally, on the motion to reject, I will say no.
Me too.
Okay?
If I may clarify, Council President, the motion before the council is to reject the deletion, which would wipe out the, the petition to delete.
Petition, yeah.
And, and that is that, I mean, I just want to act, respond correctly.
So that is the motion. Is everyone clear as to what a yes or no vote will mean?
Yes, to reject.
Okay, so...
To reject the deletion.
Yeah? So all those in favor, please say aye.
No.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Okay, we have document 285... Council Vice President.
Can we go the other way this time?
You first.
I'm first? I'm lucky. The coun, uh, I'm only voting no because the council, district counselors is voting no, so, no.
Yes.
Counselor Ortiz?
Yes.
Counselor Abdu?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
No.
Counselor DePena?
Yes.
Counselor Reyes?
No.
And Council President?
No. Motion fails. Counselors, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Is there a second? Is there a second for the approval?
Second?
Motion has been made, I'm properly second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No.
No.
Opposed? Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counselor Reyes?
Yes.
Counselor DePena?
No.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Abdu?
Yes.
Counselor Ortiz, excuse me.
No.
Counselor Maldonado?
No.
Counselor Alvarez Rodriguez noted, Council Vice President LaPlante.
Yes.
And Council President?
Yes.
The motion carries?
The document is deleted.
So counselors, for the next, Mr. Clerk, feel free to add the next document on to the agenda on my behalf, okay?
Yeah, we'll talk, we'll talk, we'll talk.
Sounds good. That way we will be fair to everyone involved, because I think that's the, that's the only way we're going to be able to accomplish something.
Thank you.
Counselors, any table matters that you wish to take off the table at this point? Seeing there's none, moving on. New business, document 330-17, handicap parking, 9092 Greenworks Street by Counselor Rodriguez is going to the ordinance committee. Document 331-17, handicap parking, 208 Carleton Street by Counselor Abdu is going down to the ordinance committee. 332-17, handicap parking, 41 Irving Ave by Carmen Telabayan is going to the ordinance committee. Document 333-17, Office of Planning and Development, acceptance of 207 Marston Street, parcel one, cleanup grant on the amount of $200,000 going to Budget and Finance. Document 333, 334-17, Office of Planning and Development, acceptance of, acceptance of 207 Marston Street, parcel two, assessment on the amount of $350,000 by Abel Vargas, Business Economic Development Director, Budget and Finance Committee. Document 337-17, Office of the City Attorney, acceptance of deeds in lieu of tax lien foreclosure South Canal Street, Merrimack Paper Site, 6365 Newberry Street, condominium, units one through sixteen and twelve, Acton Street, unit 207, by Brian Corrigan, Assistant City Attorney, is going to the Housing Committee. Document 338-17, 125 Havrell Street, request to stop, okay, request to stop court action for receivership. Joyce, Mr. Vice?
Counsel, a point of parliamentary inquiry, I, I just wanted to get your ruling. I mean, oftentimes, I sometimes question items that are put on the agenda that we have no jurisdiction over, and, and, and it doesn't seem as though we have any jurisdiction. I realize the parties have come before us in public participation and spoken, but could I get a ruling from you whether or not we should even deal with issues that we have no jurisdiction over?
Mr. Clerk?
Again, these are the same folks that come before the council and came before the clerk's office. I, I don't see the clerk's office as a stopgap to make that decision, that's why it's on the agenda. If the council sees fit that it is a lack of jurisdiction regarding a court case, it may be appropriate to suspend the rules and withdraw the document again.
What, what were they only talking about?
It's document 338-17.
And the, the parties, the petitions are asking for the council's, I guess, assistance to stop the court action of, of for, not foreclosure, excuse me, of receivership.
Of receivership.
I concur certainly with the Council Vice President, it doesn't appear to be something within the jurisdiction of this body.
Motion to suspend the rules?
Counselors, if there's no, if you don't wish to take any action, I will submit it.
I, I would like to make a motion that we send it to housing and then also ask for an, a complete opinion or a second opinion, I guess, just to, to reiterate, to reiterate what the clerk said from the city attorney, is that possible? Is that what that...
Yeah, this case was in fact handled by the city, Assistant City Attorney Corrigan, he, he'll know right away.
Yeah, so that, that would be, I think, just to make sure that we're going in the right direction with that.
So a...
As a person.
A motion was made, is there a second? It dies like to, due to a lack of a second? Counselor Rodriguez?
Oh, can we, can we engage? All right, so basically, as far as I understand, the court is the one assigning any receivership to any property.
Do you have a motion?
The city of Lawrence, oh, I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules and, and leave it in the full council or send it as a committee of the hall.
Excuse me, I need the motion, I need the motion to send it to subcommittee. It wants a second.
It's die because of lack of second.
Got it, thank you.
So your motion is?
To suspend the rules and, or either, either leave it here or send it to the...
Leave it here.
The full council. Or to the, to the whole committees of the hall.
Leave it here.
Can't leave it here.
And probably table.
The motion is to table.
Message to table, yep.
Okay, so the motion is to suspend the rules and table document 338-17.
Second.
So motion has been made, all those in favor, is there a second?
Seconding, suspending the rules?
I mean, I made the motion, two second.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Document 339-17, stop sign, two-way, Marvel Ave and Oregon Avenue by Counselor Rodriguez is going down to the ordinance committee. Document 340-17, resident sticker parking, Front Street, Counselor Abdu going to the ordinance committee. Document 341-17, handicap parking, 39 Chester Street to be deleted, Barbara Evans and Counselor Abdu is going to the ordinance committee. Mr. Chair from the Personnel Committee, when is your next meeting?
There will not be a next meeting, there are no agenda items.
Okay, Mr. Chair from the Housing Committee?
May I, may I interject? I know I'm not the chairman, we had the last meeting scheduled, the meeting on the 11th already.
For the 11th, okay?
October the 11th.
Madam Chair from the Ordinance Committee?
The 12th, 12.
The 12th?
12 is Tuesday.
Mr. Chair from the Budget and Finance?
The 12 is Tuesday.
What do we do for budget, Mr. Tuesday? What do we do?
Uh, Wednesdays. So Wednesday, the 11th?
Yeah, we have a housing committee already scheduled for seven o'clock.
Seven, the 11th.
So we can have a...
Seven PM, the 11th.
Eight o'clock Budget Committee meeting? No, yes, no?
Okay, eight o'clock.
Might be longer.
What? Can we do seven, can we do 7:30, just in case?
That meeting probably be longer than that, because we're going to have the, we're going to have the firefighter department and the police department.
Is that the one?
That's the one for the, mm-hmm.
Uh, may, may indulge the council on the 10th?
The 10th? Sounds good to me.
The 10th, it's on.
It's Tuesday.
Just, okay.
At seven o'clock?
For Budget and Finance?
No. 12, you give 12 yet?
Why is housing doing the 11th?
I don't know.
Housing doesn't meet on Wednesdays.
Because it's Columbus Day.
Columbus Day.
It was Monday, it's Monday.
Can housing meet on Tuesday?
I can meet on Tuesday, but we sent the notification, did we already send the notifications out?
We can amend it.
We can resend it, it's not too late.
I mean, it's up to you, counselors.
Tuesday, Tuesday is preferable.
Tuesday, yeah, we can do it on Tuesday.
I'm fine, as long as we can get the notices out.
Tuesday, the...
That is, you came with the notices tomorrow?
She wasn't there.
Tuesday, good?
All right, so for the 10th, housing the 10th and Budget and Finance the 11th.
Seven.
Okay, counselors, is there any motion to, a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Good evening, everyone.
David's getting...